Would like to call to order the January 3, 2017 work session for the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Welcomes. Good to see everyone in a new year and a very special welcome to our newest Commissioner, Blake Keiger, who was just sworn in about 10 minutes ago in our regular meeting room. It's good to have you with us, Blake.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. First item on our agenda is the approval of the work session agenda, and there have been some changes, I think, which are noted on your copies there. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move on to discussion items. As you can see, our presentation from Cardinal Innovations has been moved to our February meeting. So first up is Infrastructure and Asset Management Capital Projects Update, and Kyle Billifer is with us to talk about that.
Good evening. I just wanted to go through and give you a quick rundown of kind of where we're standing with some of our open CIPs. If you guys have any questions during them about what the overall budget is or entire scope of work, just ask me as we get to that section, and I'll expand on it. And the first one I want to start with, if you can go to the next page, is the Franklisk Park Western restroom construction. We have, that's actually a typo, I'm sorry, that is supposed to be the arena restroom renovations, and we have met with an NGPA contractor, and we're awaiting a proposal. This is just to redo the Cabarrus room restrooms, where you guys often have meetings. This is to redo all the finishes. They were done in a lot of the same colors that are throughout the arena, and that finishes does not really meet the current clientele they have with the business meetings and the weddings and everything in the Cabarrus rooms. So this is not a physical change to any of the structures. It actually meets all current ADA requirements, so we're not required to do anything different with stall partitions or plumbing fixtures. It's just to really go in and update the actual aesthetics, if you will. The next project that's underway is the arena safety lighting. So if you're sitting in the arena and it is during a dark event, you might notice that there's not always aisle safety lighting. That was built prior to the requirements of you having little lights through all your concrete stairs, things that you would see in movie theaters or larger arenas. This is an option where we can have a very defined LED spotlight above those different aisles and the concrete seating that will be able to come on during emergency events and also dim during actual real events to allow for better lighting out the stairwell. The stairs that are behind those areas are in the actual aluminum seating area, and we already have a fixed purchase, we just haven't installed it there. So this is just for the concrete area. And we're going to be reviewing the last two samples in February. We had one sample come in, but the actual beam of light was much too wide and almost blinding. So if you tried to get up out of your seat, it would almost put you right back down in your seat. Can move on. Okay. So that first one, that's where I made the mistake, a little copy and paste information that was wrong. That's supposed to be the Franklisk Park Western Restrooms. We have a proposal from an architect to do that project. We're not going to move forward until the restrooms at the exterior of the barn are completed. Those two CIPs were actually combined into one, so we're waiting. We're about two months off from completing those barn restrooms. So if you're ever up at the barn and there's an event where it's reserved in the lower part of the barn, we literally had people that were using the shelters or a playground outside running into possibly a wedding reception or a 50th anniversary wanting to use the restrooms inside. So based on where the wall was and where the plumbing was, we were able to create outside exterior restrooms in the shed one that faces the Franklisk Park main office. So this will allow for users of those amenities up there to use that exterior restroom, and that's the same CIP as the Western restroom, which is put in for ADA compliance. That would be down on the tennis court side of Franklisk Park, if you're familiar with that park. The reason I have not signed off on the proposal for the architecture is we are in the process of trying to renew our lease with the state, and we're not going to move forward with putting that type of cost into an amenity until we get that paperwork back from the state. There will also be a significant utility cost to that restroom, just for where we have to bring the utilities from. We'll have to put in a separate pump station for that.
Kyle, I would imagine there'll be proper signage and all that so that we can prevent what we're trying to fix.
Oh, from people going inside? Yes, sir.
Not them not knowing that that's been done now, so we'll have to have people assignage to direct people.
Yes, that is correct. Courthouse master plan update. This is the first phase in an actual courthouse replacement. We had three solid, long days of meetings, I didn't put those adjectives in, with all the courthouse current and possible occupants. So we looked at every option of who's over there now, who might go over into a future courthouse. In lots of counties, you see where different departments are actually housing the courthouse, one of them being registered deeds. So we kind of went above and beyond and interviewed everybody we could on possible space needs moving forward. The draft master plan update, it's in its final stages. I've actually reviewed it, and Judge McGee has also reviewed it, but we have not gotten the final version to send to all the users now. So once we get that out, part of the actual contract that we signed with Mosley Architects for that update on that plan was to take into account all those space needs and give us a floor layout rendering, not an exterior, what it'll look like on Church Street rendering, but just a floor layout rendering. And then we'll begin the process of meeting with all those users, and then at the beginning of next fiscal year, we will actually put an RFQ out for a design firm. Okay. The next one is the Sheriff's Department Training Range Renovations. We've made an engineering firm selection via the RFQ process. The Timmins Group has been selected, and we've had one kickoff meeting with IAM and the Sheriff's Department to initiate the proposal process so the contract can be entered into. I have not seen the proposal yet. They had some other projects they were backed up on, and this is, was not a high pressing priority for us, but this is for both environmental utility and some space improvements out at our current firing range. This is the beginning step, and in fact, the Timmins Group, who has a lot of experience with a lot of different ranges, is one of the few that I could find that submitted or anywhere in the state that has dealt with exterior firing ranges. So you notice now most firing ranges are going indoors, and there's a very long and lengthy code on how you have to build those, but when you get into the exterior ones, especially ones that are built next to your CND landfill, it tends to muddy the waters on the requirements of those. So that's kind of what we're getting into. Questions on that? Last but not least, Rob Wallace Park. Substantial completion was achieved as of 12/2016. The park is fully completed now. It won't open to the public until the soft opening. We are obviously working out of a lot of kinks right now in terms of gates and fencing and signage and things like that, but everything did meet our Part II grant deadline. In fact, tomorrow I will spend four hours going through all of the invoices for that park to complete some of the paperwork for the ALPS department for the Part II grant that they'll have to submit. We have additional land purchases in process. To this date, the current cost of the entire park as of 12/2016, $6,652,995. That encompasses everything from the time the county started, all the way through the different master plan phases, land acquisitions, the actual contract to build Phase One, contracts to build the trails, geotechnical, playground, shelter, the whole nine yards. Questions?
Well, certainly congratulations on getting the Wallace Park completed. I think I expressed some skepticism as to whether or not that could happen that rapidly, and you did it.
It was a team effort, sir.
Yes.
Wasn't just me.
Great. It's exciting looking forward to that soft opening. Has that date been finalized?
It's the 21st of January at 10:00 a.m.
January 21st at 10:00 a.m. So we hope to see some folks out, and it will be open for the public to use after that, at that time, right?
Yes, it will.
Excellent.
If you were down there now, it would appear that it's open to the public. We've had a lot of people coming through.
Oh, okay.
We're harking that out right now.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions for Kyle? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just one. Kyle, on the $6.6 million, is that close to what we budgeted originally? Are we up, down, or where are we at?
Well, I mean, we set the CIP budget amounts in the first few years, you know, we were slow to get started, so we actually had more money in the beginning. And as we've gone through with different cuts that different boards might have made, I really, Pam would be better to answer that question, I think, than I would be.
Well, and also, not just only for my benefit, but for the benefit of the viewers, and also keep in mind, Mr. Keiger is, you know, new to all of this, and he would probably like to know a lot about what we've been doing for the last couple of years. Don't go into all that, so we can sort of brief him on what.
Sure. I will tell you, and I'm sure Pam can give you an idea on the budget, but I will tell you that that site is extremely difficult to put infrastructure on because of the slate rock and the elevation changes, and trying to make it as many portions of it possible as ADA compliant is extremely difficult. And the utilities and how we had to get into the park, and you've got one creek crossing right now, which if, anytime you cross a body of water, never mind just the environmental regulations, but the actual bridge itself and the cost, and I foresee us having one, if not two, more creek crossings with the future phases. I'm not saying it's Phase Two or Phase Three, but with the future phases, this won't be the end of it. And it's just a, it's an expensive process, but it's a beautiful piece of land, and the way that it lays, there is nothing else like it in our county, and I would even suspect, I would equate it to what a lot of plantation is for Mecklenburg, in my honest opinion, where it's just rough and raw, and that's the way God made it, and we shouldn't do much more than we have to to what He put there. That's how I look at it.
There is still some money left in the budget that's been approved to go into the next phase. However, we don't want to, we're not going to do anything until Kyle's now having the master plan updated so that you can look at it and also the ALPS board can look at it as well and make sure we're going in the right direction, and then we'll be able to set a budget for that next, the next phase of the park.
Well, I was out there a couple of days ago, and I really was impressed at how much has been done. And, you know, we've had quite a bit of rain here lately, and so still yet work was going on.
Yeah. We've been, every single person involved with the project has been working around the clock. ALPS, IAM, our contractor, the engineers, everybody.
Well, I appreciate all of the hard effort, you know, because we had a deadline, and we met it ahead of time, and we got the donated funds from the people in Raleigh. It was $350,000. I don't know if you knew that, Blake. It was contingent upon us getting it done, and we did. So thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to make a quick comment that it's probably been four years, maybe five, that we, the Active Living in Parks Commission Board had a meeting on site, and I went, I was at the meeting, and we, Mr. Wallace drove us around on John Deere tractor on a raw piece of property. And so I haven't been back since, so I'm eager to go, and I can't wait. That's a great thing for, you know, that part of the county to finally be able to have the park. So fantastic. Looking forward to going over there.
I'm sure you will enjoy that experience, because it's been quite a process where the entrance originally was to be has been moved somewhere else, and we sold a piece of property for an industrial use and in the process of purchasing some additional property to replace it, and it's been a back and forth kind of thing, but it's turning out really extremely well. Appreciate your efforts, Kyle, along with many others.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle? Okay. Moving on to discussion items for action at our January 17 meeting. First is 4.1 from Finance, Cabarrus County Schools funding requests for new high school construction, and we're glad to have Susan Fearington to talk with us about that.
Good evening. And like we said, the Cabarrus County School Board is requesting our board to fund a new high school, and there's a letter attached to the agenda item explaining the needs. But the land we've already purchased is on Weddington Road, and a portion of the architect fees have previously been approved by the board, so they're starting their transactions or trying to study the property. The estimated total cost for the project is $71.6 million, again, the $71.6 million. As on all of our county projects and our school projects, we strive to always pay cash upfront for our engineering, architect, technology, and the furnishes on the back end, and just borrow money for construction, infrastructure items, site work. That's the type of things we want to borrow money for. So if we're going forward with this concept, we would anticipate borrowing $59 million towards this project. And at this time, just for FYI, our current principal outstanding of debt is $323,766,138 is our current outstanding debt. Again, that's $323,766,138. With the addition of the $59 million that we anticipated in borrowing if this project is approved, that will bring our principal outstanding to $382,766,138. Are there questions at this time?
We just, while we're in the work session here, it's a good time to talk about this is because it just understand if we approve this, that means you're approving us to move forward and the schools to build the school. We, right now, we can't guarantee based on that amount of debt that we can do that without a tax increase at this time, because we don't know what the numbers are. You'll, we'll have a better idea in a few weeks at your retreat, but we wanted to make sure that you understood if you're approving this tonight, which they say they needed approved this month in order to get it open in 19?
August of 19.
Yeah. But we wanted to make sure that you understand that, and plus you also have the parking deck coming on, so that wasn't included in your debt number.
Right.
And then immediately after that, the courthouse. So we just want to make sure that you understand, you know, as we always do, we're going to try to pinch as much as we can, and hopefully we're going to have growth, and you see the growth happening still. We've been lucky over the years, the growth has been able to handle most of those, the new debt, but this is a big number, as you can tell, plus with ours on top. So we just want to make sure you understand that we will be bringing some updated numbers to you at your retreat, but there is a possibility out there that we're not able to cover all of this without the potential of a tax increase.
The debt service would be approximately $5 million added to our budget each year to take on the high school debt. Currently, just to give you an idea, each year for FY17, this year our debt service is $46,265,000. That's principal and interest, just to give you an idea of our budget. That amount is, every year, we had to pay our debt service as principal and interest. Again, that's $46,265,000 for the current year that we're in right now for debt service. So we'd add another $5 million to that if we took on the high school.
Plus whatever to build the parking deck.
And other projects.
And then we also know that we're searching for that additional piece of property for the elementary school south of Harrisburg, and I know as soon as we secure that piece of property, they're going to want to start that school as well. So just, just want to make sure everybody understood that that potential is out there now. That doesn't mean it's going to be an automatic. We don't know. It could take it up, or we can just start looking at priorities. We can delay some other projects. We can delay a parking deck, or we can delay a park expansion, or we can delay those until we can, can we, until we can get the revenues to cover them without an increase. But just wanted to make sure everybody knew that upfront, because the school is expensive.
Yeah, and I'm sure you've looked ahead if there's any debt going to be dropping off over the next few years.
Right, and we'll have a better idea, like I said, at the end of the month, at the Commissioners Board Retreat, we'll have a five-year look at what the debt is dropping off and adding on if we accept this.
I just wanted you to know, because you're going to have your work session and your regular meeting prior to your, to your retreat. So I don't know if you delayed this 30 days, what that would do to their schedule till you get some better numbers, but according, I know they're, they're pretty concerned in order to meet the deadlines. They are asking for it, for you to approve it this month.
And also in the agenda, there's a budget amendment for us to go ahead, and they want us to go ahead and approve the additional request for the architect and a portion of the engineering expenses to keep going. So this, and they wanted that done in January, at your regular board meeting, so they could continue on their, on their timeline.
But if you go ahead and do that, I assume that means that you're on track to continue.
Yeah, if we're going to design, we don't want to hold the design for two years, because then you're going to have to go back and spend.
But this is bumping it up how much sooner than what we thought we were going to do when we bought it.
A year in advance, a year, a whole year. And the reason is, we purchased a property, we were able to secure a piece of property much sooner than we thought, so therefore the opportunity was there to move.
Which, as you're saying, could happen if we find the elementary school. We could be in the same boat.
If I remember correctly, I think with the school board's projections, bumping it up, I know that they said on the original schedule, they anticipated it would be at or over capacity the day they opened. Is that?
It was something along those lines.
Right. So it's.
I mean, I know that we need it.
Oh, I think we all agree. The need is there. I mean, the numbers are growing daily, but just want to make sure that you were aware that there is a potential there.
I personally would rather hear those numbers end of the month before, even though we know we need to do it, so I don't know that we've got a choice, but I still would rather hear the numbers at the end of the month as opposed to rushing this between now and our regular meeting. So I guess my question to them, if you can get that information and maybe send back to us, is, okay, if we wait till the work session at February, that's not that many more days than our other meeting, I might, I would be curious to know what that would do.
Well, just for my two cents worth, and Mr. Keiger can chime in, so can Liz as well, when you're planning a school like that, it's not like planning a lot of things. It's because you've got redistricting to do, you've got bus routes to do, and when you set it to open a certain time, it's got to open then, and everything has to be open and ready, functioning and ready for, to be used. And it's something that we're not going to be able to put off, because the growth is there, and we've seen the numbers of all of our high schools. They're at or above capacity, or will be over capacity in most cases already, and I don't see, with all due respect, Diane, I don't see putting it off as going to help us any. We just, in my opinion, we just need to move on with it. I don't, I'm not warning us to just say yes, we'll just do a tax increase and be in favor of that and all, because that obviously will be the last resort, I think. Everybody's looking at, that's the absolute last resort, and we don't feel like, I don't feel like that that'll be necessary. But I also know, though, that it's something that will happen in the future, because we're not going to be able to stay at 70 cents where we've been for years, where we got neighboring communities. I think Mecklenburg is probably 81 or better, and Gaston is 87, and so we're much lower than them. Rowan is about where we are, and Stanley's about where we are, but they're not experiencing the rapid growth that we are either, with the schools' population growing every day and all. But for whatever's worth on my part, you know, I would be willing to go ahead and go with it on the consent, but whatever everybody else thinks. I think, Liz, you may have had a question or two, and, but we just got to move on with it.
Can you tell me of the current debt that we have, how much of that is school versus county debt?
Not without.
Or a percentage?
Not within my, I'm going to go, I'm going to only say 75% is schools and 25% is county.
Okay.
Just keep in mind, for the county, we're still paying on the arena, the law enforcement center, the jail, such as some of the larger ones, but the vast majority is school related. I do have that, just not.
And that's okay, and I feel, felt like you would have a ballpark idea on what projects are out there and where, you know, kind of where that stood on the majority of the debt that the county has to support.
And we have some equipment for 911, that's out, well, at least out there, this smaller amount, but that's the, that's the majority of the county projects. The rest of them are, you know, they're 20 years. We will have to open a school, and 20 years later, we're still paying on it.
Yeah.
And we do work closely with our bond, under, the underwriter and our bond attorney, and every time we can re, redo our debt and get lower interest rate, we do that, and we did that two years ago. They're constantly looking at that.
Yeah, and they, I think they've done a great job, along with you and the whole staff, to make sure that we're being as good a stewards as we can be with the debt service that we have, and making sure that we're not excessive on anything that we're doing, you know, and those types of things. As you know, many of the functions of the county is really a checkbook for other elected bodies who make the decisions, and we're asked to fund those decisions. There are really very few things that we truly have complete control over when it comes to a lot of issues. And I would say that I would, as I continually pick on Pam, so I guess I need to transfer that to you and say, I don't vote for spending any money until you can tell me where the money is coming from.
Yes.
So I would agree with Diane. I would, I would like to see that five-year projection and see where you think that's coming out. You know, our, it's a matter of days that we, actually, we have the retreat on the weekend, and we turn around and have a work session on Monday. So it's not like postponing it for a full month. It'd be postponing it for a week or two. I'm sure the school system with their architects, they've come up with their plan on, seen many of those, where it overlaps and how many days it's going to take to do each portion of the project, and their graphic timeline. So, you know, I would be hard pressed to think that delaying it until the work session and amending our rules and voting on it at the work session would, would be completely unacceptable to anybody. So I would prefer to have you give me all the numbers so that I have that to back up why the decision's being made.
Good.
If it results in a tax increase, or if it results in the parking deck being delayed or the courthouse being delayed a year, then I think that's, all of those things have to be considered in the decision. $71.6 million for a high school is a lot. Not that it's not valued, but that's a lot of money. An elementary school, 30?
Thirty.
Twenty-five to thirty.
Yeah.
Twenty-five to 30, so, you know, there has to be some give and take somewhere in all of this with all of the things that we have to balance, so I prefer to look at that five-year spread and see what you're projecting. So Pam, the burden is now off of you to convince me to vote for any budget or any expenditures. It's now, you know, been moved over to Susan, so that should make you happy. I won't harass you as much.
Between Susan and Kristen, just to let you know, what you will get at the work session will be a one-year section of the five-year plan. We will not have the full five years, but we will show how we will absorb that in the first year, and then we'll show the cost throughout the remaining five years, but the whole full-blown plan will not be done at that point in time. I just wanted to make sure everybody was understanding that, to give you a concept. But the last two five-year plans, we didn't think we'd absorb the debt, and we did.
We did.
Somewhere it's going, the buck's going to stop somewhere, so we'll see how it goes, but.
During the month of January is when we're getting our final December tax numbers in. Everything's been, no tax bills can be added, excuse me, yeah, no tax bills can be added after December 31st, so then we have to project out the last six months of the year, then we'll project out the current, the next year. Sales tax is always a two-month delay, so we project out the rest of the year, but getting that one more payment in on January 15th will help us project out the rest of the year, so that always helps. But we'll get the best guess we can at the retreat. Just to point out one more thing, the money that they were talking about, that they want us to approve for the engineering architect, that will be coming from capital reserve. That's where I'm suggesting that to come from.
Well, I'm just going to say that Commissioner Poole's statement that 71.6 is a lot of money is the understatement of the day. Coming, obviously coming late to the party, one of the things I would like to see, but it, I mean, it's just, it's way late in the game, but I still would like to see, I know where we were with the last two. but I still would like to see, I know where we were with the last two high schools that we built, and I guess what I'd like to see is, in inflation-adjusted dollars, what they would cost today, and then get an explanation of, because that, that still doesn't cover it. Okay, what's, what's the other amount, and why is, you know, why is it so much more? And they're, more likely than not is a good plausible explanation. I just would like to hear it before, you know, we move forward.
I did take a look back in at Cox Mill was our late last high school that we built, and that one was 44 million, like right at 44.5 million dollars, and that was, we opened that school in 2009, so...
And it came in under budget.
Not quite 10 years, so that was...
Which is not normal, you will agree with that, but Cox Mill, either they overbudgeted in anticipation of bigger increases or whatever, but it came in under budget, so...
Yeah, I remembered the number. I can't remember the one prior to that, but I, you know, and I guess to, not to overcomplicate it, but, and just how, I know, you know, the land's already paid for, and just a line item, well, here's the current land, here's what we paid then, because that, you know, can be all over the board.
Right.
Supplies, FF and E, just, you know, not necessarily just a lump sum, you know, what we paid the contractor for the sticks and bricks, but then the other categories. And it doesn't mean this number's magically going to go down. I guess I'd just like to see and hear what the, what the next explanation is, because...
A comparison too.
You know, it's like deja vu. I think the last time I was in this room, boy, we were talking a lot about school construction costs, and that, some things, I guess, probably won't change very much, but it at least is something I'd like to see.
And I believe Cox Mill was built during the recession, and that was the best bids we ever got in history. So, there should be some deviation on that one, but...
But that will not be hard to do, because the schools have provided a category budget for me for the new high school, and I have what we actually spent on Cox Mill, so that will not be hard to get, and then we'll work on the inflation part.
So, do you think that we can have the discussions between now and our regular meeting to see what the implications will be if we delay it to our February meeting? It sounds like we have a consensus as to wanting to discuss this at the retreat.
So, you want to be prepared at the regular board meeting in January or the retreat? Which would be the preferred?
No, we'll, we'll reach out to the school staff and see what that impact on their schedule would be, if it's a two-week delay or two, the decision's not made for two weeks. Will that have that much of a detrimental impact to them in order to do it?
Not that it's the same, but Royal Oaks, they've announced that they're, instead of going in mid-year, as they had planned, they're going to wait six more months and go in at the beginning of the next school year. So, there can be some flexibility. I mean, you do, they want to start it on time in August. I don't disagree with that, but I just, I would have trouble believing that two weeks is going to set it off so badly they can't get it in. And this is a year earlier than they originally proposed to us.
That's correct.
So, that's a lot to move it up. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, because interest rates are going to be lower than now than versus later, as we know, they've already gone up some, and they, I'm sure they will continue to do that, but that's a lot to, it's a lot to hit our budget a year sooner than you were already planning on, so...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Great. Well, we'll, I'm sure, get some feedback on this at our regular meeting in two weeks, and perhaps defer it until after our retreat. Next item on our agenda, 4.2 from Planning and Development, Placid Road abandonment, and Susie Morris is here to talk with us about that.
Good afternoon. What you have in front of you, this is, I think, the first one of these that we have done since a lot of you have been on the board. This is a right-of-way abandonment that actually has to go through the North Carolina Department of Transportation. So, this is the first request for that. The Castleburg subdivision in Kannapolis required some off-site road improvements. DOT required those improvements, and those improvements included a realignment at Shiloh Church Road, so it changed to a 90-degree approach, which shifted the overall right-of-way. So, the developer has provided this petition to us to abandon the old right-of-way, and then the very last step, the road right-of-way would be abandoned, and then distributed equally to the property owners on either side. The step that starts that is this particular step, and it is the Board of Commissioners approving a resolution that essentially states, we agree that this road right-of-way should be abandoned, and we would like for the Department of Transportation to consider abandonment of the right-of-way, and also abandonment of maintenance for that right-of-way. This particular step does not require a public hearing. It's just adoption of the resolution, and then the next step would be for us to send the resolution to the office in Albemarle, and then it would be forwarded to Raleigh for the Department of Transportation to consider abandonment of that right-of-way. And then, three to four months from now, you'll see it back in the form of a public hearing and the formal abandonment then of that right-of-way.
Any questions for Ms. Morris?
And this would be a consent agenda item.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next we have a resolution amending the Board of Commissioners 2017 meeting schedule.
The, your schedule, as approved, included the summit that was previously scheduled for this month, so we're going to need to amend that meeting schedule. I know we had had some discussions for the end of February or March, and, but we never really came up with a date that would work. Commissioner Keiger, this, these are those summits where the elected officials from all the municipalities get together. We do them quarterly, so we're trying to get the first quarter meeting set up.
Do you know what days you have to avoid to avoid the meetings for the municipalities?
I do not have that.
I believe Thursdays work best.
I think we had, there were original, the meeting we had originally scheduled, there were some conflicts, or it was too early. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, we had it scheduled for, for, yeah, the City Concord, hence a couple of conflicts there. And it was, it was in January.
Yeah.
Because it was conflicting with, with their retreat.
That's right. That's right.
We were going to do Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday with your, with our board here, and their, theirs was on Thursday, Friday, or Wednesday, Thursday.
It's Thursday morning, you do Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, so it was conflicting with their, their annual planning session.
Right.
So, how about Thursday, March 9th? To throw out a date.
That would work for me.
These are done in the evening?
Six o'clock.
Six?
Does that sound agreeable?
Yeah. Concord's work sessions are on Tuesday, not Thursday. Okay, well, we'll shoot that one out and see what the, what the municipalities think, and then we'll have it back for you for the regular meeting.
Regular meeting, when we would approve this. Okay, next item is the approval of the regular meeting agenda, and you all have that before you. As far as our consent, I think the school issue is already on our new business item, and then the 2017 meeting schedule, you know, we can, if we need to pull that off at that meeting, we can do so then. Does anybody else see any other adjustments that need to be made? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, and so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5, and that would be to discuss acquisition of real estate.
And we're inviting Mr. Marshall and Mr. Billford.
Yes, and including Mr. Marshall and Mr. Billford in the closed session. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you.